I'd been thinking about for a long time and then one of the town councilors, Dave Adams, was really enthusiastic about going forward with a marketing video. So after talking to other communities and other chambers like Worcester and others, I found out that having a professionally done video can be incredibly expensive. And I think that we have a wonderful cable department here with Jim Cosgrove and Max Gullikson, and so we said, "We can do it here." So I just want to kind of thank some people before we get started. So along with the full-time staff of the department, we wanted to thank Bill May and Mark Arpin, who are part-time people, and they helped us a lot with gathering content. Thank Officer Craig Gagnar from Oxford for the use of the regional drone. I also want to thank Rich Merrill for volunteering his time. He's a resident here. I think he's been here for about 25 or 30 years, and he's done a lot of voice work over the years, and he volunteered his time. He loves this community, and when you hear his voice, you'll know why we would choose him. Also want to thank Jim Hennessy for the still photos that you see in the video. So I think without saying anything further, we'll just let the video speak for itself.
Southbridge, Mass. is home to over two dozen advanced manufacturers that produce parts and machines for the optics: medical device, defense, aerospace, and aeronautical Also produced are high-end professional cutlery, hand tools for the carpentry trade, and drums for the music business. For over 100 years, the town was home to the headquarters of American Optical, the world's largest manufacturer of opelic products. At its height, it employed 6,000 people here. Much of the former American Optical complex has been redeveloped and now includes the Southbridge campus of the Quinsigamian Community College with newly renovated biology and IT labs, and the beautiful and inviting Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center with handsome, well-appointed guest rooms and fully-equipped conference rooms of all sizes. The facility is brimming with amenities such as the Shades Lounge with indoor and outdoor seating, a health club, and a pool for members and guests. The town has a number of great places for getting together with old friends and meeting Available manufacturing and commercial property costs are much lower than similar properties in the overheated markets of Worcester, I-495, and Point East, yet the town is only 10 minutes from the Mass Pike, Route 84, and Route 20, and less than 30 minutes from downtown Worcester. And unlike many of the suburban towns in the region, most areas of Southbridge are fully serviced by town water and sewer and natural gas. Come to Southbridge and stroll our wide sidewalks past stately brick buildings in our historic New England downtown. Stop by the Town Common, the site of so many seasonal events. Meet someone for lunch at the Red Baron and watch the planes take off and land. Take a hike and enjoy our natural beauty. Come visit Southbridge; there's something in it for everyone.
We don't want to just park it on our website and just wait for people to find it. So this will be pushed out through LinkedIn, Instagram, Facebook. This will be sent out to corporate site selectors, the Greater Worcester Chamber, the offshoot marketing firm, or marketing nonprofit of Discover Central Mass, the Central Mass South Chamber, commercial realtors in Worcester in this area, and more. Because the point, yes, of course, we want our community to see it because I think that they should take pride in what we do have to offer here. But the point is, we know about this here. We want to have outsiders know about that this is a gem, and it really does have a lot to offer. So does anybody have any questions or comments?
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I want to, I'm wowed by it. I appreciate it. And I know about six years ago, the town did it, and it cost about $5,000, $6,000. This was done based on labor of our own employees here in town.
Yep.
And I want to thank you, Cable.
Yeah, same here.
I want to thank all those that were involved in it. I can't wait to see what happens next as well as we move forward. But that's pretty impressive that we were capable of doing that in such a professional manner, so I just wanted to say thank you for the hard work to all of you that were part of it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor McKenna?
First of all, I just want to say that was a really good video, and I wanted to say thank you to the Cable Office for presenting it. But I do have some other questions for Rosemary.
Yep.
Because I have been advocating to have you come here every once in a while, give us an update. You've been here for about four years, I think, a little over four years.
Yes.
And I just kind of wanted to know, what steps have you been taking to bring new businesses to Southbridge and improve the employment opportunities for Southbridge residents?
Well, that's a very big question with a very long answer. But to sum it up, over the last four years, I'll kind of hit on some areas and elements of the things that I've been doing. So I helped found the Southbridge Business Partnership. What that does is it creates a good business environment. It puts businesses in touch with each other so that they can maybe become each other's customers, help each other grow. It creates ambassadors for the town, and it raises the profile of all of our businesses. I have an inventory that I'm constantly updating of commercial and industrial properties. In fact, as I find out about properties, because a lot of property owners are not very forthcoming when they have space available or they've decided to sell their building, a lot of buildings just sit there because the owners don't want to, they have no interest in selling them until they think the market is the absolute hottest it can possibly be. So I spend a lot of my time talking property owners into helping me sell their building, telling them that this is a hot market, this is the time to do it. As I said, my inventory is constantly changing. I actually kind of almost act as a realtor. I go out to the buildings and tour them if I haven't seen them before, so I know if I can recommend them to someone who doesn't want to have to do a lot of work. I have, you know, on the side of planning and zoning and that sort of thing, that lays the groundwork. So I hired a consultant to do complete analysis and rewrite of our zoning bylaw so that more of our properties are developable because that, obviously, if you have someone interested in coming into town or someone here that wants to expand, if they can't because our zoning bylaw doesn't allow it, then that doesn't help. So it's kind of, it has to be a multi-pronged effort that's done. I have also, I had hired another consultant to put together a zoning, I'm sorry, excuse me, an economic development plan, which was recommended in the master plan. And what came out of that is the branded signs and a market analysis that shows in dollars and cents what categories of goods in town our residents are actually paying for but not paying for here because they don't exist. Or there's very few, for instance, full-service restaurants, shoe stores, you know, many, many different types of businesses, as you know. It used to be a very vital, vibrant town with many types, and now it really isn't. However, we do have people, residents in town who have money. They're just spending it elsewhere. And so I walk around with that market analysis under my arm, and I, you know, I'm constantly knocking on doors and handing that to these landlords of these buildings and saying, "If you just put in a little bit of an effort and show, actually try to recruit beneficial tenants and show them this, numbers don't lie, you know, you can do a lot for yourself and for the town." I mean, those are just some examples of the kinds of things that I do on a regular basis.
And no doubt, you work very hard. But more, I'm more interested in results. And so I'm looking for maybe some data on net change in business revenue and employment in Southbridge.
I would never have, businesses do not share their revenue with government. That's not something that I would be able to get.
Well, employee numbers and business revenue are reported to the federal government and the state government. I'm sure you could get it from there.
Yeah. I can't get at revenue. The Department of Revenue would not release that information to a town. I can certainly, on the Department of Labor website, I can see the range of employee count. But, you know, employee count is very fluid. It changes a lot. And in order to get the actual specific employee counts from companies, I'd have to call, you know, 500 businesses every year and ask them, "How many employees do you have now?" And very few of them would probably even answer me. So it's more difficult than you think to be able to get at that information.
Well, I know that you were pushing for some, if you don't mind if I ask a few more questions through the chair. I know that you were pushing for some tax abatements for companies in town, so how would we know that they're keeping their promises if we don't know their...
Because they do have to report. So I, and actually, I wasn't pushing for it, but I was helping them apply to the town council to see if the town council wanted to provide tax exemptions on the new taxes, which is the TIF. So that's a tool that exists in the state, and we're remiss if we don't mention that to companies that, and if they don't want to apply or we don't want to give it to them, that's fine, but that conversation kind of has to happen because the state provided that as a tool to help communities like ours. So in those situations, if they do want to apply for that, they absolutely have to tell us, "How many jobs do they have currently, and how many new ones do they plan to create, and when do they plan to create them, along with what is their new investment going to be?" So that is all documented, and they have to report to us and to the state on an annual basis. But there's only, I think, two TIFs that have been provided in the four years that I've been here, and I don't believe there's any other outstanding right now. So if they actually go ahead with their investments, well, actually, right, so Hardline Heat Treating was one of them, and United Lens was the other, and I know United Lens is almost done with theirs, except they didn't actually, I think you're all aware of their situation. They said that they would retain their jobs. And it'll be interesting to get their annual report this year. We'll leave it at that. Hardline Heat Treating has not completed their investment yet, but I know what, how many jobs they had when they start, when they applied.
Okay. Thank you.
You're all set? Thank you. Thank you for the video. I know that was something we had been looking forward for the last several months, and it's well done by all.
Great.
Look forward to pushing that out and working to bring some benefits to the town of Southbridge. Thank you for all the work that you do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Citizens Forum. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the council? Anyone? Seeing none. Agenda item nine: Vote to confirm the appointment of Jason Hall as a full-time firefighter EMT upon successful completion of all medical and physical agility testing, PAT, and background checks. Is there a motion?
So move.
Chief? Town manager first, or chief?
Chief, correct. Chief is...
Chief?
Good evening, everybody, council, town manager, and chairman of the council. Thank you for allowing us. Obviously, we have a few items on the agenda tonight. I'll try to be as brief as I can with each of the items, but this one here tonight, right now, is hiring of our 24th full-time career member. As we talked last year at some point, we had created a list of hiring for new employees here within the fire department. We've used that list over the last six months a couple of times. Mr. Hall here is taking an open position that was vacated by a member that was hired a few months back, and he's moved on to another town. So Mr. Hall did very well through all of his testing, testing points, and interview processes. Last week at PPP, we had a long discussion in regards to a few things, but this is Jason Hall. His wife and son is here tonight with us. Obviously, a large contingent of the fire department because this is very important to all of us. Mr. Hall resides in Princeton currently, and he also currently works for the Woods Ambulance Service and Gardner. They provide 911 ambulance service and also transfer services for that town in that area. He currently holds a certificate as an EMT basic. He is currently researching paramedic educational programs in the area that he may be wanting to get enrolled with. So if we do pass this tonight, he will be looking to aspire to be a paramedic for our department in the near future. He does, he does hold a firefighter one and two pro board certification through the Full-Time Fire Academy in Florida. We've checked on the references there, and everything is kosher with the Massachusetts regulations. He also has a little over two years of fire experience where he worked and resided in Marianna Fire Rescue in Marianna, Florida. Jason also spent five years in the Marines as a platoon sergeant. Background check is currently being performed by the Southbridge Police Department, and I highly recommend Jason for this position. He's a good candidate. Obviously, he's a family man. This will be contingent on successful completion of medical, physical, physical agility testing and a positive results from his background check, so thank you.
Question? Counselor Steves?
Yeah, just one quick one. Unfortunately, I couldn't make that PPP meeting. I noticed that you, and you just said that he lives in Princeton, and that's definitely more than the 15-mile radius. Do you have any plans to move to town?
Yes, sir.
Huh?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
In the near future, we are looking at residents in the area.
Okay. Because I know we have plenty of houses available, so. Chief, one question that I have, and for the record, this was voted unanimously by the PPP Subcommittee. When you say that the pro board certification for firefighter one and two, does that mean that he does not have to go to the Mass Firefighter Academy? It meets the training requirements?
That is correct.
So you just have to do in-house training?
In-house training, yes. In any other areas that we feel that he needs training in, we can get specialized classes for him. But I think with his experience and his pro board certification, his career academy, he should do well.
Yeah, so we're not going to lose him for 10 weeks to go to the academy?
Correct.
Okay. And for the record, you know, highly qualified, and thank you for your service to the country as well, as we recognize veterans tonight, so thank you for your service as well. This will bring your department to fully staffed, is that correct?
This will bring us to 24 full-time members. That's what we're budgeted for for the last 10...
And for the record, this council has worked very hard to make sure that you're staffed at the appropriate levels for what our funding capacity is, is that correct?
That is correct.
We're doing our best to staff your department, is that correct?
Yes.
And this appointment will make your department fully staffed?
That is correct.
So this council is working hard in addressing staffing requirements for your department?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you. I just want that as part of the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's no reflection on you, Mr. Hall. I welcome you to the town of Southbridge. I do hope that you move close to the town of Southbridge so that the callbacks we get in a timely manner. No reflection on others that live a distance away. This is more of a reflection on other issues, but we're working hard to make sure that you're staffed, and I'm glad that you're, the department and the council has worked cooperatively over the last year and a half since your tenure as chief of the department and deputy chief Hewlick in addressing and rapidly filling positions when they became available. So welcome to the department, and I thank you for coming aboard. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimously, all present. Vote to confirm the appointment of Lieutenant Keith Nichols to the rank of captain within the Call Fire Department effective immediately.
So move.
Second. Discussion, chief?
So again, here I stand at the podium to rebuild the department. Here we are tonight talking a little bit about the Call Department. A few years back, the Call Department had about five members. They were active. Those five members have dwindled down to two members, and lo and behold, Lieutenant Keith Nichols, who's been an officer for the department for quite some time, stuck it through. He was continuing to come to calls. He was continuing to come to training. With the last year, obviously, there's been some efforts, as you've already said, Chairman, in regards to building not just the career department, but the Call Department is very important also. This supplements our department when we're stretched thin. The Call Department is very active in doing the trainings. We have two current Call Firefighters going to the Volunteer Academy right now, which started this Saturday in Leicester. So we're trying to get everybody up to speed and everybody on the ground and ready to go to do calls. But the reason we're here tonight is that, you know, Lieutenant Keith Nichols, as I said, has been involved. And when, last year, when I discussed with him about the future of the Call Department, he says, "Chief, anything I can do to help, I can do that." So he stepped up and he said, you know, that he's been able to sit and interview some of the new call candidates. He's been very active in helping, I'm going to say dismantle, or help us with our municipal alarm, fire alarm system. Keith is an electrician here in town, so he obviously knows a lot about fire alarms, so he's been helping us a great deal in that. He's also taken on the responsibilities of reactivation of our auxiliary department. The auxiliary department is also a department that we use for working at events in such as, you know, handing out water at fires, you know, working parking lot attendants and assisting with police department activities as best they can. And again, those people, the auxiliary department right now, are also taking a CERT program. So everybody in the department's been very active, and obviously, with Keith stepping on board, I asked him to take on the auxiliary department, which actually takes a little load off of my shoulders to organize and train those guys. It is for all these reasons, I really highly recommend Lieutenant Keith Nichols to be the next Call Department captain. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? This was brought through the Protection Persons and Properties Subcommittee and voted unanimously. I for one want to thank you, soon Captain Nichols, for sticking the course and staying the course with the Southbridge Fire Department and working hard to rebuild the department because I know on the call side, you're working very hard to recruit new members, and kudos to you for doing that. Kudos to the chief, deputy chief, and all the members of the fire department for doing that to protect our citizens. We had a pride tradition of a strong Call Department, and I know that we're all working together to rebuild that so that when we do have openings in the career fire department, full-time fire department, that members that wish to aspire to that are prepared and ready. So thank you for that, Captain, and thank you for your service to the town. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimously, all present. Congratulations, Captain.
So, Mr. Chairman, can we have Captain Nichols sworn in by mattoe on his eyes?
Yes, sir. We're going to pin, have his son pin him with his new badge, if that's okay with you. That's fine. Congratulations.
Can I raise your hand, sir? Do Keith W. Nichols solemn swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a Call Captain on the Call Fire Department for indefinite period of time faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and by the by the charter and bylaws of the town of Southbridge to so help you God.
I do.
Okay. I just need you to sign. And then I'll write me. So I just have to give you the opening letter. I just, you just sign me. Right. Thank you.
Item 11: Vote to confirm the appointment of David Adams as the town manager's delegate to the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, CMRPC, for one year effective immediately through June 30, 2020.
So move.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Town Manager?
Obviously, I'm appreciative of Counselor Adams doing this. CMRPC is an important organization for the town of Southbridge and a number of issues. They do a lot of planning for us, and I welcome Mr. Adams to join their team.
Counselor Lazzo?
I didn't have any background information on this gentleman. I just am amazed, Dave, behind you 100%, I know you do a good job. Where you get the time to serve this town in its capacity, in your capacity, is amazing, and I tip my hat to you and give my support 110%.
Second. Counselor Steves?
I think it's a great thing that you're doing this. I know this has been a seat that's been vacant for some time. Just one thing, it may be a technicality. I noticed that his application here refers to a town council slash town manager delegate, and since he's a sitting town counselor, I don't think he can technically be subject to the town manager's appointment process. We can appoint him as, we can appoint him as our delegate to the CMRPC. He can't really be the town manager's delegate at the CMRPC. He would be the council's delegate to the CMRPC.
Okay, so if you want to amend that to the, as the town of Southbridge council slash manager delegate?
We could do it that way, if you want to do it that way.
Okay.
Because he's a sitting town counselor, so.
I just wanted to state, I think that was just pure wordage from the CMRPC themselves, so.
So, well, I think technically, the appointment is a manager confirmation of the council, so it really is a manager's appointment because that appointment is typically a board of selection, so I think that goes as to the same appointments as other positions. Counselor Lazzo?
Isn't he the town's delegate though?
Exactly.
Pointed by the manager.
That's what I'm thinking. But yeah, but he in his case is our delegate because he's a city councilor.
The only reason why I'm bringing this up is, I mean, I think the intent of what we're doing here is positive.
To fill the position.
But the thing is, when he goes to the Central Mass meetings, which I have attended a few years ago, what ends up happening is you're going to have a Southbridge badge on you. I don't know if that makes a difference.
So, thank you, Chief, excuse me. Michael Dion was the recent opening of the fire department. He went to the Uxbridge Fire Department and he did make this donation, a kind donation of $500 to, for continuing education and possible any purchase of equipments that we may need.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? All present? Item 13. Vote to approve the transfer of a 1999 Ford F-350 truck from the fire department to the Southbridge Public Schools Maintenance Department for use until the school receives a newly improved vehicle in March of 2020.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Discussion? I believe the intent was that they were using till March of 2020 and then keep it on in reserve at the school. So, I would want to amend that to, or into no longer usable? I mean, Counsel Lazlo?
I don't know who declared it unusable. I looked at the truck. It's a Ford. It has some back of the bed, some issues, but structurally, unless some mechanic looked at it, I could not see where the truck couldn't be used for what the maintenance department wants it used for.
For the maintenance department, right. For the fire department, it was safety, but... So, without objection, if we could add until no longer usable or?
So moved.
Right? I mean, I don't want to limit it to March of 2020 because it says until March of 2020.
Well, if it's a Ford, you know.
All right. I would actually just take off, I would, would strike the, from four all the way down to 2020. So, vote to approve the transfer of the 99 Ford F-350 truck from the fire department to the Southbridge Public Schools Maintenance Department for use until the school receives a newly improved vehicle in March of 2020.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Discussion? I believe the intent was that they were using till March of 2020 and then keep it on in reserve at the school. So, I would want to amend that to, or into no longer usable? I mean, Counsel Lazlo?
I don't know who declared it unusable. I looked at the truck. It's a Ford. It has some back of the bed, some issues, but structurally, unless some mechanic looked at it, I could not see where the truck couldn't be used for what the maintenance department wants it used for.
For the maintenance department, right. For the fire department, it was safety, but... So, without objection, if we could add until no longer usable or?
So moved.
Right? I mean, I don't want to limit it to March of 2020 because it says until March of 2020.
Well, if it's a Ford, you know.
All right. I would actually just take off, I would, would strike the, from four all the way down to 2020. So, vote to approve the transfer of the 99 Ford F-350 truck from the fire department to the Southbridge Public Schools Maintenance Department.
Very good. So, there's a motion to amend it to eliminate for use. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Unanimous? All those in favor as amended? Opposed? Okay. So, somebody let Mike Como know he can have his truck. Item 14. Vote to approve the annual Southbridge High School bonfire at the McMahon Field according to CMR 527, 10.239, subsection 1, for pre-Thanksgiving football activities on Wednesday, November 27, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Chief? Do you have any?
You should have in your packet a letter from the principals, I mean, excuse me, superintendent, and then a letter from myself. This is kind of a letter that's forwarded each year. Of course, our biggest concern is safety concerns. Over the last couple of years, for some reason, the day that we've done it, we've had inclement weather with large amounts of rain or snow. One year, we did have winds that were very high. So, this approval is totally up to you guys, but it definitely will be weather dependent.
Okay, that's fine. All those in favor? Council Steve?
Chief, the letter mentioned the possibility of shifting it to another date if the weather is bad. Do you have any idea of what that other date would be?
That would have to be arranged through the school department, but I think we'll leave that window open. I do believe the last year, the year before, we did change it to the following day.
It ended up being after the game, yeah.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? All present? Item 15. Vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Bourgeois Reckon and Excavation Incorporated Westminster, Mass. in the amount of $63,325 for the demolition and removal of 58 Pine Street.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Okay, this was voted unanimously. Counselor, did you have something, Counsel?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I don't know if the town manager has this or if it can be answered. How much money is in the revolving account for demo?
There's actually, and I'm not sure which one of these is a revolving account.
I can't hear you.
I'm not sure which one of these is a revolving account, but I have four accounts that are approved for demoing buildings, and it comes to 180, 180, it's 360, 460, 510, just over 500, between 500 and 600,000 dollars. The revolving account usually doesn't get fed back too much money because a piece of property that we take down a building on is usually too small to build on, so the interest is usually by a neighbor. We spend 50,000 to take down a building and we usually end up getting back short money.
So, if by taking this building down, this would be an unusable lot, non-tax generating?
It could potentially be, the hospital's right across the street. I can see some interest there and possible parking, but the only way that they could rebuild the use that's there is if they apply to the planning board to reinstitute a previously abandoned, non-conforming use. There is, there is a path to do that, but we don't always encourage that path. The reason for zoning is to adjust the town to what they want the town to be.
Just one more, if I could, Mr. Chairman. I can't support this this evening. I'd like to see this rebuilt so we can generate tax revenue for the town. I don't know if an engineer, structural engineer, has looked at this building. I know I've taken a quick ride by. I do see the boards. I see what we talked about in subcommittee. But by tearing it down, it's not going to generate any revenue. Structurally, I don't know if you have that information, if, if an engineer has looked at and deemed this building to be unsafe?
If I may respond?
Yes.
The issue isn't the building. The issue is the fact that the building's been abandoned. The use has been abandoned. Massachusetts state law defines an abandoned building or an abandoned use as not having been used for the purpose it was built for over the last two years. The zoning laws state that if it's been abandoned, it must be rebuilt or reconditioned to today's code. Our zoning code doesn't allow that to be there anymore. So, even if we could rehab that building, we can't because the zoning denies us that opportunity. The lot is way too small for the structure that's on it.
Thank you.
Counsel Steve?
I have a quick question. I'm looking at the zoning map. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the zoning map at the moment. Is this on the R3 side or the city, the central core side?
I can't hear you, Gus. I'm sorry.
For this property, is this on the, is this zoned R3 or is this in the central core?
Is it in the central core?
I believe it's a central core property.
You think it's on the central core side?
I think it's in the expanded central core.
Doesn't that allow us to have a lot more, a lot more flexibility than the residential zone would?
Again, there isn't means to reinstitute the abandoned use anywhere in town.
Right.
If you apply for a special permit through the planning board, the owner of the property has to apply for that special permit. There is no owner of this property right now. The gentleman who owned it died, and nobody probated the will. The bank, who had a note on it, washed their hands of it when they took a look at it. So, literally, there is no owner on this property. A lot of the properties that we will be looking at, we will give the owner the option to either take it down or rehab it himself. However, if they don't exercise that option, we don't have the authority to exercise it until we own it.
Okay. So, when we knock this down, will we essentially own this property?
We will not. The property will remain in the ownership of the current owner or the current lack of owner, if you will, but we will put a demand on that, on the owner. Generally speaking, it's the owner we put a demand on, and when they fail to pay it, we put a lien on the property, much like our tax liens and everything else.
Okay.
It's a necessary...
I understand the problem.
...system in order to improve the look of the town and make the town marketable, assist Ms. Rosemary in selling the town.
Well, I know probably you're going to...
You've got to make it look good to make it work.
Counsel Mackey?
Well, Andy, you did answer my question that I was going to ask. There's a lot of properties in town that are being taken down, and I understand why they're being taken down. I would just like to be, to see something, some plan for, because this is all being put on the taxpayers, and I'd like to see something done so the taxpayers can try, we can try to recoup the money for the taxpayers. So, if he's placing a lien on it, then he's answering my question. Something should be put on it. I don't, I don't care who uses it, that they would pay for the demolition. And that goes for all the properties in town. I know that you took down Nine Row Street, and that one, I think the town ended up taking that one, I believe. I thought I saw something in the planning land court, but I know that the owner collected the insurance on it and then walked, and then sold it a month later to someone else, and I don't know why they weren't responsible for it. So, once again, it fell on the taxpayers. 80 Hamilton Street, the same thing. The town ended up paying for it because the owners were in Florida. They didn't want it. The town took it down once again at taxpayers' expenses. And then the other day, I was sitting out there and someone was dumping their leaves on the property. So, I don't know when this became a mulching piece of property, but someone pulled up in a pickup truck and were dumping their leaves on the property. So, I would just like to see something, a plan to place liens on these properties because otherwise, it's always the taxpayers who are footing the bill, and I'd like to see something that, so we can get our money back. That's all.
Thank you. Every property we take down, we do put the lien on, or we put the demand on it and we do put the lien on it. The problem lies in that the lien usually exceeds the value of the property. So, when we sell it at auction, we get some money back, and that first goes to pay taxes, the taxes all on. There's a hierarchy of lien. First lien goes to the taxes. Thereafter, it goes back into the fund to take down buildings. Now, to Mr. Mackey's point, we are attempting to shift a little bit, try to get some of these buildings before they end up losing their grandfather status. 33 Union Street, we just put it into receivership. Receivership is where we go to the courts. The courts recognize that owner is not responding, and they assign a contractor to repair the property. The contractor took over this property just about a month and a week ago and already pulled the permit. He's going to do the complete rehab. What will happen now is he will put a demand on the owner. The owner will either pay that demand or lose that property to the receiver, and the receiver will become the landlord of that property. So, we're looking at receivers. We're looking at that one. We're looking at a receivership for 361 Worcester Street right now, and there's one on our shortlist right now on Thomas Street that we're actually going to consider a really small, single family that we're going to consider trying to put a receiver on. So, we're trying to avoid every step of the way to take these buildings down, but the end result is if we have a building that looks like 58 Pine Street and we cannot get an owner to respond to it, it's an insult to the town to leave that building up, and I think it's in the town's best interest to go after it after we've exhausted every other possibility. But we are about to start a process on five buildings that we identified in the vacant buildings group and hopefully concurrently go after all five of them, and I suspect two of them will end up in receivership. Two out of the five.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, and I just want to make a couple of comments because this has been a very frustrating process, Counsel Mackey, and some of the councils here will be aware of it, other ones because they're new, aren't aware of what we went through, but I briefly want to talk about that because you make a very good point and one that frankly frustrated us. You're correct in that some of these people have what's called limited liability companies that own these properties. And the problem with those limited liability companies, they have no assets. So, what they do is they milk the properties all the way down and keep hitting up people, tenants for their rents. After they milk down a property, they don't fix it. They let it continue to deteriorate. They walk away. We go to try to go after that limited liability company, and there's no assets there. To me, this is a real problem in state law and in federal law that doesn't allow, that allows these companies to do this. Back a few years ago, when we were working together, we had a team that worked on creating a blight ordinance. We looked very seriously at this issue. Agewam, Massachusetts, and another town had actually taken the lead to do this. One of the things that they tried doing is some of these properties have mortgages on them from banks, and we would like the banks to foreclose on the property and take that asset over because once they do that, we can then lean to go after the bank and get the bank to pay. The problem is that when the banks look at these properties, let's say the value of the property is 20,000, and it's going to cost the bank $60,000 to take it down, the banks just walk away from their mortgage, right? And we, you know, Agewam and another, another town tried to go after the banks, and the courts ruled that even though the banks had an interest in the property because they had a mortgage, they didn't have the ownership. And since they didn't have ownership, you couldn't force to pay, get them to pay the back taxes and stuff. So, it was something we did a lot of research on and really wanted to go after, and we couldn't go after them because the legal system doesn't allow it. But to me, this is an area where I think there really needs to be state or federal legislation to go after these kind of, what I call them, slum lords, that people walk away from this property. It wasn't from lack of effort. It's really from the way the state and federal laws read.
Counsel Mackey, you have a follow-up?
If I just follow up. What I'm thinking now is that, okay, you couldn't get it from them, but now going forward, if somebody else wants to develop that land, I think that they should be responsible for reimbursing the taxpayers for the demolition. We've cleared the land for these people. If you want to develop it, pay for the demolition. I don't see why it keeps falling on the taxpayers. That's all. I don't really, that's all I have.
I agree with your sentiment. I think unfortunately, when you get to that process and it goes out for auction, we're not getting the dollar amount for the auction because of the site. So, yes, unfortunately, we as the taxpayers, all of us, are left holding the bag for these people that don't want to maintain their property, and it's not right. And the banks aren't stepping up because they just write it off as a loss and they don't care about the town of Southbridge. So, I mean, I commend the inspections Department for being aggressive with some of these blighted, well, with these blighted properties. Fact that we can get receivers, that's no cost to the town, correct? So, I mean, that's, I know you've been aggressive trying to get properties into receivership, getting it as far as you could in that process, and the last step is to go this route, unfortunately. It's just, it's an awful system, and we're left holding the bag, unfortunately. Counsel Tron, I know you...
I'm upset.
You all set? You sure?
Yes.
Counsel Lazlo?
Just a curiosity question to the Director of Inspections. Have we ever tried through our economic development group downstairs to start a co-op with a, say, a high-end, a solid developer that would be interested? Because the thing that keeps going through my mind as the discussion goes on and the valid points on both sides is most of these houses, I mean, if they're condemned and the structural's are gone, it's a tear down. The one that really bothered me was the one on Hamilton Street, when the structural's, when you look at the ridge poles and the walls, it was a, the frame was an ace. Maybe the siding was bad, the plumbing was old. So, to me, I thought at some point maybe a creative idea of getting a co-op between the town of Southbridge and a developer, a solid developer, that a lot with sewer and water and a frame on it has got to be worth something. Now, if people are going to come in and say, "Well, you got to go for a special permit," I understand that whole process. You go to the planning board, you have a structure, you didn't use it for X amount of years, it lost its use. But the thing is, if the town wants to do this, and you work with your planning board, and you start a co-op where we can actually together flip the property and not have to take such a bath on the demo, I thought that would be a creative idea to deal with it in the future. I mean, on this one here, you have my support. I know the property, it's a tear down. I don't see where the structural's look very good from the exterior. I haven't seen the interior. So, for myself, going forward, I don't know if we can even do this legally. I'm just brainstorming about the town of Southbridge and what we could do with some of these structures that do have value. that do have value.
Mr. Pelletier?
I believe it exists already. I believe it's, Eric might be better, the Southbridge Development Authority?
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment Authority. Unfortunately, they have no funds to do the projects. So if there was a way that we could find to get them funds to do the projects, we could assign some of these, or we could ask them if they're interested in developing these, sell them off, and be a self-sustaining development authority. We're still faced with the zoning laws, which, if it's been abandoned for two years, is a huge process to go through to get it. Even if it's got good bones, the, the law says abandon for two years, if the use is not allowed there anymore, we've got to...
And I understand that, but remember who makes the zoning bylaws? The town of Southbridge.
Yep.
We, the government, we, the planning board, we, the zoning board.
Appeals, I concur.
So if we collectively get our minds into a think tank and say, some are going to have to tear down, that's a call that somebody's going to make when they look at the structural's and what the, what, where it is, and setbacks and stuff like that. But some of the homes that I see, I look at and say, the one on Hamilton Street bothered me because it was such a majestic house, and it was solid, and it had all street parking, and it wasn't a...
Eighty Hamilton Street, the pink one?
What's that?
The pink one?
Yeah.
It was beautiful from the front, there was actually a tree that crushed the back of the building.
Right, and I understand that, but the thing is, that was a salvageable building to me. And I'm in the building business, and I do have all the licenses to build a high-rise, but I'm just talking tonight. I know, I'm not going against what's on the floor, I'm thinking maybe, on the development side, maybe Southbridge has to look at it in a different manner on some of these properties. And I think through Mr. Adams and Central Mass Planning Commission, and there has to be a way to positively impact some of these neighborhoods without automatically tearing down. That's the only suggestion I've got on the floor. Thank you.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So I know Andy's done a hell of a job trying to get, prevent the blight from actually happening. One thing that I've been pushing for the last couple of years, actually, my first time on any type of municipality government, municipal government, was on the redevelopment authority. And one thing that I asked the former chair was, if you had a budget, what would you do with that budget? And I think this is something where maybe the planning development needs to actually bring in the economic and the inspector in and say, okay, there's eighty Hamilton, what do we do with that? Can we gift, can the town council gift that to the redevelopment authority to sell it for a parking lot, or whatever it may be? I, I don't know what, what our laws can say, and what, what we're allowed to do, but I think it's an effort to, to make. We took a tour of Gardner, and their redevelopment authority is spot on. They started off with a little bit of seed money, and I know the redevelopment authority was big into our Central Street parking lot, too, by the way, but they started off with a little bit of seed money, that was because of a brownfield that they had, but they went over and started, they have eminent domain authority, by the way, too, as well. So they, they have a lot of authority that we, I actually don't see a lot, and I think it's worth looking at, but Gardner, you know, they, I think a theater burned down, and they took it over, and they're re, rehabbing that theater, and then they're going to sell that theater off, or whatever they turn it into, and they're going to make a profit, and then they'll have a rotating fund. So if we can actually, the redevelopment authority's been on our books forever, it has had nothing. So I will give the kudos to the town manager with funds that went into the, the Central Street parking lot, but I think we can go further at this point in time. And we just got to figure it out, but we'll put all our big brains together and try, if we can cure all the diseases in the world.
Ms. Town Manager first, and then Counsel Laza?
Just quickly, because I, I want to comment, I've had conversations with the chairman of the redevelopment authority, and we've talked specifically about that piece of property, and, and I've told him I'd be more than willing to bring forward to the town council gifting of that land for some seed money, but I asked him to put together some kind of plan with what the redevelopment authority would do and how they structure that. So I think he's looking at that, and when he gives me something as a plan that I can work with, I'd be happy to bring it forward to town council. I completely agree that we should give them some seed money and start this process, and the chair of the committee also feels that way, so it's just a matter of him putting together some plan to bring forward to.
Counsel Laza?
To the Director of Inspections, you have four different accounts that you can do demolition. An accumulative of the money in the four accounts, how much money do you think are in these four accounts?
Four accounts cumulative are one eighty, and one eighty, that's three sixty, one fifty is five ten, and then there is a general fund budget of another fifty thousand, so approximately five sixty total.
Five hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Okay. To my point, tonight, I'm voting in favor of a sixty-three thousand dollar tear down. In a building that is salvageable, if you have, instead of putting the money towards tear down, is it, could we find a way legally to get seed money through this demo accounts? Instead of, not right now, not tonight, I'm saying, in the future, some of the money, instead of tear down money and putting the building in a landfill, or wherever it goes, to use it as seed money to rehab some of these properties, if they are structurally sound, and if they are in a, in a decent situation? That's the kind of thinking we need to turn around, we need to turn the page. I mean, the easiest thing is to tear it down. They put wood chips over it, get what you can get for it, and move on. I get it. We need to, I mean, when you talk about recycling and, and, you know, tearing down a building, where do you think that thing goes? So I mean, in the big picture, maybe as a community, we might in the future look at something like that. That's, that's what I'm talking about, because, you know, instead of tearing it down and putting it in a hole, or send it to an incinerator, or, you know, or where they part it out, I think we really have to, for the future, is to look in to what Mr. Katrona said, put the thing back on the tax rules, but find people, there are developers that will do it. I know that for a fact, just a matter of due and due diligence. Thank you.
Ms. Tommey?
Just one comment, just to be clear, because I, I know there was a potential amendment to this about where the money was coming from. Do you have that amendment?
Excuse me?
I, I thought there was going to be an amendment that divided up this money, I talked to the finance director today about it, about where this money was coming from. She, I think she presented to you that, that split up of where, what accounts it was coming from. Do you prepare to bring that to the council tonight?
We have, we have three budgets, one that was formed in two thousand and fifteen, one in two thousand and sixteen, and one in two thousand and seventeen. I don't know the origins of these budgets, I think they were all capital improvement requests, but we also have one that we fund every year, fifty thousand dollars for building repairs, renovations, and demolitions. The finance director is proposing we take twenty-five thousand out of that fund, leaving us an additional twenty-five thousand in that fund, should something come up between now and the end of the year that we need to address quick, and take the other one from the oldest capital improvement budget, which is the two thousand and fifteen budget. So we would be taking twenty-five from the general fund budget, and thirty-eight, three twenty-five, from the oldest CIP budget.
Ms. Finance Direct, do you have those account numbers?
I do have those account numbers. The, the general fund budget is zero one nine, zero 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 zero...
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Pelletier. That has to be recorded with our clerk, so if you read it off like that, it has to be entered into the record. So if you could state the number for, for the, what's the name of the account?
It's a general fund budget. There's a balance of forty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars in it.
So how much is being taken out? Go ahead, give me the number again.
We're proposing removing twenty-five thousand from it, and the budget number is zero one nine, zero zero, zero zero, zero point five two seven four zero zero. The oldest CIP budget is a two thousand and fifteen budget, it's got a hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. We are proposing taking thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars from that budget. That budget number is six four one five zero.
Let's take a motion to amend it to include those account numbers as listed.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment? Post, you know, it's all present. In the future, it'd be nice to have this before the meeting. I did amend this budget, this article this morning, could have been done, but all those in favor as amended? Post.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. This also went through the subcommittee, we could have had it at that as well, but thank you.
I'd vote for this one.
Okay, I entertain a motion to, with unanimous consent, to move Agenda Item Twenty-One up, so, because Ms. Harnoyes is, before we get into any potential...
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor of moving the agenda item? Oppose. Item Twenty-One, vote to accept General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three F three and a quarter, which establishes a special revenue fund known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, to reserve capital franchise fees and other cable-related revenues for appropriation to support PEG access services and oversight and renewal of the cable franchise agreement, the fund to begin operation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, which began on July first, two thousand and nineteen. The finance director will transfer the balances of the Cable Access Special Revenue Projects Number Six Six Two Six and Six Six Two Seven as of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, to the newly accepted receipts Reserve for Appropriation Fund as of July first, two thousand and nineteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We do have the finance director here. She did contact me late on Friday afternoon to ask if we could put this on the agenda due to the timing of information she received from the Department of Revenue and timeliness, and she would not be here at the next meeting because she's away. So I felt, given the fact that it needed to be done as of July first, the timeliness, I could not have reasonably anticipated this, really is not, I don't believe a controversial item, so therefore, I had the agenda amended at eight thirty, nine AM, as allowed by the open meeting law, and it was posted appropriately. So, Mrs. Harnoyes?
Thank you. The Department of Revenue is requiring us to adopt a different...
We can't hear you, get a move then.
I'm sorry. The Department of Revenue is requiring the town to adopt a different accounting option than we had in the past. In the past, we had a special, two different special revenue funds for the cable access. Would have one where the, the annual fees went in from charter based upon their revenues, and then there was another fund for capital, which was part of the contract, where a hundred thousand dollars went into the capital fund. And the expenses could be spent directly out of those funds, but now the Department of Revenue is requiring a receipts reserved for appropriation, which the, the receipts are going to go into the special revenue fund, and any appropriation to spend monies out of here is going to have to come from the town council. Now currently, the town council does approve a budget for the cable access, which is voted out of the special revenue funds, where the, the annual monies come out of. But even any other capital expenditures as of this point is also required the town council to vote for approval. So that's why I'm here this evening, is to meet that requirement. In order for the fund, funds not to close as of June thirtieth of nineteen, we have to vote this fund in to begin for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Though I have, I had a meeting this afternoon with the director and the financial person in the cable access, so they are aware of these requirements, so they can pass that on to their council, and they also have a copy of the, of the IGR, which is the information that's released from the Department of Revenue and how the accounting is supposed to take place.
Counsel Steve?
I'm just, just to clarify then, if I understand you properly, like when, for example, the, the cable department just replaced a whole bunch of equipment recently, had they done that after we did this, they would actually have to come to us to get approval to do that now? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I guess it really depends where they're going to pay the funds. If they're going to pay it out of their budget...
Yeah.
You know, they have a certain amount, like they have ten thousand dollars to buy miscellaneous materials and supplies for the office. Then they can go ahead and, and go ahead and put it through themselves. But if they're going to do a, a good-sized upgrade on anything, then yes, they would have to come to the council if they want to use their capital funds.
Even if, even if we had set aside, for example, like capital, if, if, would we be able to incorporate these capital funds into our capital planning process in the spring, and designate it as coming from these funds, so that they would be able to use it just as any other department would use capital funds? Or would they have to come to us after the fact, saying, oh, we want to buy new cameras, for example?
I would think it would be restricted to coming out of this fund. But as long as the council appropriates it...
Yeah.
Then they can spend it out of there.
So if we did it during the capital process, but saying we were appropriated from this fund, then it would be okay, just like any other department would be able to do it?
I think that would be okay. Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Laza?
Yes.
Counsel Maketti?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. See, I put you before the reading, so that you could get out of here. Item sixteen, vote to ratify amendments to the Southbridge Zoning Bylaw, introducing the addition of Section eight point nine, Regulation of Signs, removing the existing sign regulations from the general bylaws, Section nine dash two oh two, adding sign definitions to Section ten on the umbrella hearing signs. This is the third and final read-in and adoption of same if approved. Counsel Laza?
Ms. Chairman, with all due respect, due diligence, we read it in its total entirety twice. It's been posted in various departments. I would like to make a motion to waive the third reading.
I'll second that. All, all, all those in favor of waiving the read? Opposed?
Well, Mr. Chair, real quick, I just wanted to make a clarification, it was only once that we read all the way through.
Once, we read this one. Marijuana, we read twice. So, but the motion was to waive the read. This has been put out in public, it has been put on the cable access, it has been put throughout the town, so. Eric, do you have a question? Nope, what else? Okay. So, roll call on ratification of this zoning bylaw.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Laza?
Yes.
Counsel Maketti?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes. Motion carries. Item seventeen, vote to ratify amendments to the Southbridge Zoning Bylaw, introducing the addition of Section eight dot seven, adult-use marijuana establishments, moving the current Section eight dot seven, adult-oriented businesses, to a new Section eight point eight. This is the third and final read-in and adoption of same if approved.
Ms. Jim, again, I'd like to make a motion to waive the read.
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor of waiving the read? Opposed? Waive the read? This was read in its entirety twice. It was, no major changes to it. It was put out in all the local, the police department, all the locations that we said. We have not had any other input outside. We did do our public hearing, we've done everything that we were supposed to do, correct, Eric? Are we all set with this?
Yes, that is correct, we are all set.
All right.
Have we had any comments from it?
No comments from anybody else?
No comments at all.
No comments?
Other than, I've been getting a lot of phone calls of interested parties waiting for this to be approved, so.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Town Manager?
Just a comment, just so the councils are aware, there are already at least one company working on a host agreement already, so expect that you may see that very rapidly as a result of everybody expecting this to be approved.
Roll call.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Laza?
Yes.
Counsel Maketti?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
The zoning bylaw is adopted. And with that, the motion, the vote that we had to repeal, the marijuana bylaw that we had is now in effect, because it was contingent upon the adoption of this zoning bylaw. So...
Oh. I forget, it's already said in the...
Yeah, I was actually thinking of the signed bylaw.
As general bylaw prohibiting repeal the ban was contingent upon the adoption of our zoning bylaw, so therefore our bylaw, general bylaw banning adult-use marijuana establishments is now repealed because we have zoning bylaws in place. Correct Eric?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Item eighteen, vote to ratify the amendment to the Southbridge Code of Bylaw, section three dash two-oh-two Airport Commission, to include parentheses, "One member may be a non-resident providing the member is actively involved in the Southbridge Municipal Airport." Second read-in of eleven-four-nineteen, first read-in on ten-twenty-one-nineteen. So with that, we didn't do a complete read-in. Counselor Steve read off the-
He read off the first paragraph last night.
First paragraph was, the only change would be that there was a five-member board, this is to change it, that one, the addition in red is "One member may be a non-resident providing the member is actively involved in the Southbridge Municipal Airport." This is available in all locations, okay? Any discussion on this? Mr. Town Manager?
Just, I want to thank the town council for this. Obviously, this has become a regional airport. We have people who own plans from all over the area. It is great, we have someone in particular who's already interested in this particular commission. We believe it will be a real asset to have this person involved. But he doesn't live in Southbridge, he is a pilot, he knows the equipment, he knows the airport very well, and I really think this is going to be a tremendous thing, and I want to thank council for adding this to the agenda.
Counselor Adams?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick thing, another second read. Should we read the whole paragraph?
If you'd like.
Just because we don't, I mean, I don't think we've done what we did with the signs and the marijuana.
Yep. So, yeah, I'm saying the motion's to waive the read of the entire bylaw. Is there a motion?
Show move.
Second, second. All those in favor of waiving the entire read? The change is in Airport Commission three dash two-oh-two dot one Establishment. The original language said that there shall be an Airport Commission consisting of five commissioners. The members of the Airport Commission shall serve for a term of five years and until their successors are qualified. Parentheses, chapters three, eight, nine, acts of nineteen forty-six, close parentheses. The addition is after "are qualified," is the addition of "one member may be a non-resident providing the member is actively involved in the Southbridge Municipal Airport." There are no other changes to the bylaw. Okay? Third and final read-in will be at our next meeting. Counselors' forum, Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you. I did talk to the Town Manager about Maria Avenue, if you could give me an up-
About what? I'm sorry.
About Maria Avenue, if you could give me, if the Town Manager could give me an update on Maria Avenue. What's going on with that property?
Mr. Town Manager?
Okay, I'll give it my best. So, as you know, me and you have been talking pretty regularly about this particular issue. There's a, I think, I believe it's a backhoe on a property that is essentially an open piece of land open for sale. There had been some, I'll call it controversy for lack of better word, between a neighbor and this particular developer. The developer happened to walk into the office as I was meeting with our Inspection Services Director and our Town Planner. We had a conversation about the whole issue. I was assured at the end of the conversation that the piece would be moved within a couple of days. I had asked Counselor Marquetti when he walked in tonight if the piece was gone, because quite frankly, I expected it to be gone, so I was a little surprised that it's there. I'm not sure why, because the developer seemed to walk out of the discussion reasonably happy. I asked him what the point of having this continuously go on for us, and I think he was frustrated with some, I guess, long-term disagreements with a neighbor that's near it. I'm going to have to follow up again tomorrow to find out why what I was promised he would do, he did not do.
Okay.
The finding process is still in place, so we'll look at the timing of that. I was hoping we wouldn't have to get to that, and I was told that it would be resolved, so I'm a little shocked that it's still there.
There's also the erosion problem too, that I would like that addressed as well.
I will say this to you, I know that both our Inspection Services Director and our Town Planner have been there, and they can address the erosion issue better than me, but they, but they are both aware of the property. I can't say other than I'm shocked, my counselor. I really thought that I had resolved this problem. I'm curious to find out why it did not occur.
Okay.
I specifically sent a note to those people involved just to stay cool for a couple of days-
All right.
And we go through, so I just can't answer that question as to why that promise was broken, or at least not acted upon as of yet.
I appreciate it. I also attended a meeting of the liquor licensing board a couple weeks ago, and the issue of the International Club came up. There's still a lot of noise going on there over the weekends. The liquor licensing board actually did not, they said they knew nothing about this. They had no idea that there were any, anything going on there. And they said that they don't issue special permits. That goes around several different departments, ends up going through your department before it ever gets to them for issuing a liquor license for just a one-night event. But they don't issue these special events. But the real problem going on there is that there's a lot of loud music going on, and they keep their doors open, I don't know why. It's a very congested neighborhood, and I think the residents would appreciate it if something was done about it. Okay?
Mr. Town Manager?
So through you, Mr. Chairman. So first, thank you for your comments. As you know, I was at the liquor board too as well, because I was kind of following up on some of the comments you had made, I wanted to be there. I provided a copy of the noise ordinance to the residents involved, so they would understand what the noise ordinance says. I provided a copy to Police Chief and the Police Department as well, the officer was there. They are aware clearly of what the noise ordinance says, as you, I think I gave you a copy that day as well. But it's very clear that normal noise is kind of expected, but I think we would all agree that that is not considered normal noise, it's above and beyond. With that, the Police Department can issue tickets, I think it's, if I recall it correctly, it's twenty-one E tickets. They can issue tickets, they are, it assured me that they're going to look at that very seriously and make that judgment call. An officer attending the scene of an event can make that judgment call and issue the tickets, and I expect that that will occur going forward.
And finally, I'd just like to follow up on the cable bills. I was looking over the contract that we have with Charter, and according to the contract, they are supposed to let you know a month in advance when they're going to raise the rates, not only your office but also subscribers. I never received any update, any information a month in advance that they were going to raise our rates. And it also mentions state law, and state law says thirty days prior to implementing an increase of one of its rates or substantial change, the cable operator should notify in writing the department, the issuing authority, and all affected subscribers. So I never received any information from them that they were raising our rates. And I think actually a rebate should, you should work on a rebate for the customers. Thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So we do get kind of standard announcements from the cable company when they add channels and stuff that goes into a file. As a matter of fact, I think at the last meeting and meeting before, I actually read you a minor rate reduction. The rate changes are very minor in nature usually, and often it's adding a channel or getting rid of a channel, so they're minor announcement of changes. Like I said, I brought one to the town council to read. I don't know if they're providing them directly to the town council. I know that they do come into my secretary, she takes them and she files them. I do look at them as part of the mail. If you want, I'd be more than happy to bring them to you and read them at the council meetings, but usually they're very, very minor in nature.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The other day I posted that we need volunteers for boards and committees within the town. I believe we already had two for the Council of Aging that are going up, just posting that. There are a lot of open, I wouldn't say there's a lot of openings compared to what we had last year, but again, if you want to participate in town on the political side or see what's happening with the town, please put your paperwork in, take a look at the boards and committees, you can take a look at it on the town website or other social media sites. I want to, again, thank PPW for all the hard work that they did with the skate park. They closed up a lot of gaps, they got rid of one ramp that was completely falling apart and rotted away. They put primer on the ramps themselves, and on the sixteenth of November at ten-thirty, there are a bunch of volunteers, about nine families, I say nine families, nine parents or guardians and children that are going to come down to the skate park and paint the skate park and get it prepared for the winter. And then hopefully next year, in the springtime, we'll take a look at that again, and hopefully it's not as bad shape as it was this year when we received it. Mills on Wheels is looking for a volunteer on Monday mornings, about ten o'clock, there's about nine homes that have to be delivered to. I literally took a tour today with the head of Mills on Wheels for the town, and we were done in about twenty minutes. So if there's anybody out there that would like to do that, you have to go through a quarry check and all that, but it literally is an hour out of your day on a Monday. And last two things, wish everybody, those veterans out there, Veterans Day, Happy Veterans Day, and Happy Birthday to the Marine Corps, you turn two-hundred-and-forty-four years old on Sunday. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you for bringing up the staffing levels today at the Fire Department, I appreciate that. I want to talk briefly about going forward and demoing buildings in town. Counselor Lazo brought up a very good point this evening. I'm not in favor of taking down buildings if they're structurally sound still. They may not look good, but if we're taking down buildings in lieu of tax revenue that could be coming into the town, I have a hard time supporting that going forward. Thirdly, I'd like to talk briefly about some of the, there's been quite a bit of erosion from a solar farm up on the Dresser Hill Road area and surrounding roads. I know I've received several complaints, and I'd like to see if that can be looked into. Every time it rains, I'd like to be sure that they're meeting the conditions of their permit, and it's been ongoing now for several months, and I'd like to see something done quickly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I could, I just want to comment to that, because we've had a number of discussions
about this, and our land use people have been up there on a regular basis, and I keep telling that the erosion issues have been solved and the problem, I guess what I'm hearing again is there's been more rain and it's still a problem.
There is a problem.
Okay, so it's not fixed? Even though they've been up there a number of times, the developer has assured that they're going to take care of it, the guys looked and saw developers did the work, but whatever that solution was, it has not solved the problem, is what I'm hearing.
No, and to go further, are they meeting, I think we need to take a look and see if they're meeting the conditions of their permit.
Through you, I'm pretty sure, and I'll double-check again tomorrow, that Eric went up there and said that they're meeting the conditions of report, that's why I'm thinking that the conditions that they required may not have been enough, because I was told I already did that. So let me check with you, and I will get you an answer tomorrow as to where that-
Thank you.
-status is.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Steve?
I actually had something to comment on specifically what you were just saying, because Maureen and I went up there the other day too, because we got a call from the neighbor down the street there. And so we took a bunch of photos, I can send you some photos. It's not nearly as bad as it used to be. I mean, it was really atrocious some time ago, but it is clear that they do need to do something additional, because I mean, that little road is, got mud all over the place. There was, one of the neighbors showed me, specifically on his, unfortunately, he couldn't send it to me because he didn't have email from his iPhone, but he showed me a photo of water actually flowing down the hillside over his rock wall onto Pumpkin Hill Lane, which should not have been happening. And there are other issues up there that really is something that, at this point, it's probably something that Conservation really needs to, they have the legal authority to deal with, so that is something that they need to be doing. But we've been getting calls from him too, so.
Thank you.
Okay, as far as the other stuff that I have on the list, I've got a few things. I'd like to mention that on November twelfth at seven PM, although this isn't in-town, Maureen and I are actually in the process of organizing it, the Dudley Grange is going to be doing, organizing a talk with Senator Ann Goby, and Senator Fatman, our senator, will be there at Dudley Town Hall on legislation particularly regarding agriculture-related issues, but anybody who's there obviously can ask questions of their senator. I know Fatman has said he's going to be there, obviously Ann Goby's going to be there. I haven't heard from Representative Durant, I did email him asking if he could come. I know that Joe McKenna is not going to be there, and I've asked if Paul Frost would be there, but I haven't heard from him. So that's going on at seven PM on the twelfth. On November sixth at seven PM, the local historic district committee is reorganizing. It's been listed in our meetings for years and hasn't actually existed, but the idea is to give that some new membership and get something going about creating a local historic district primarily for downtown. It's been sparked among other things by seeing some of the buildings that have historical value getting knocked down in recent years. So that's going on Wednesday the sixth at seven down in the McCann Room. On November sixteenth, there's a Central Mass Lime Conference going on in Sturbridge. On November seventeenth, there's the craft fair over at the hotel here. And also, I wanted to mention that Counselor Daniel and I were over at the Green Meadows Public Hearing, and it looks like they have left for the night. But I just wanted to quickly summarize some of the points that they brought out. They did a public, everybody wasn't there, they did a quick public hearing over at the police station to answer some questions about what their proposal is for their project. About ten people were there, including the two of us. So just a quick summary here is that if you're not aware of it, they're looking at doing their, a joint medical and recreational facility and growing facility and some processing and some manufacturing in the building on Mill Street that currently houses SJC Drums. They're moving into that site and some of the other nearby property in that building. And so what they're looking at, among other things, is thirty thousand square feet of growing facility in there on the first floor with the same security system that has, that would be covering the same security system as their retail space, with manufacturing, administrative, retail space in there for people. They're estimating thirty-five to forty-five employees. Their parking lot across the street, which there is kind of junky at the moment, they're looking at creating thirty-five or forty spaces there. They're talking about taking the space that they currently own at, behind the Fins and Tails and the Chinese Buffet Building and turning that into something, as he described it, as something that fits the neighborhood, no specific ideas yet. Let's see, one of them mentioned that they're talking about possibly a traffic flow of fifteen to twenty cars in a busy hour, as he put it. And let's see here, and they talked a little bit about some of the kinds of jobs that they'll be offering, but that they'll be specifically seeking people once they know when they're opening and they have some more details down, then they'll have a clear idea of who they're looking for, what kinds of skills they're looking for, and that kind of stuff. And he mentioned his timeframe for, would be about five to six months build out after two state inspections, which is about three months between them. And then he might, he may be starting with the medical side and then maybe may decide to start there and then do the recreational side, which the recreational side of their project is actually, their public hearing for the planning board starts this Wednesday. So it was subject obviously to us passing the bylaw, which we just did. So, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Lazo?
Yes, just a quick question, through you, the Town Manager, either one of you could answer this. I apologize for missing the PPP meeting. I brought up at the last council meeting a question on the actual lettering of a town vehicle and the license plates. How did that shake out?
The chief indicated that he will be putting the sales on the truck.
He will what?
Put the sales appropriately on the truck, whatever has to be done.
And with the license plates, are we going to have fire plates on it?
I know he said that they were going to do it, as far as the plate goes, I don't know if they have to transfer the plate, but it was, he did say that they would take care of it.
Do we dictate whether the plates are town plates or does the chief? Under protocol?
That I don't know. I'm not going to answer for the town of Southbridge, Town Manager can answer.
The answer is, I really haven't gotten too involved with it, to be honest. You're saying to me that you would like the plate to be a town plate.
A town fire plate?
I will check, I don't have any problem with that, I don't think the chief will. We really haven't discussed that, we really did have a lot of discussion on the decals.
Okay.
We agreed to do that, but we didn't discuss it, I'll be happy to discuss that with him tomorrow.
Maybe we should take a town-wide look at a policy for town vehicles. In talking to the former chief, it was always, and the town of Southbridge was, you wanted to identify who the chief was with the lettering down the side. I mean, and I guess it's a flavor to the community. To me, it's a pride thing that you go out and buy these vehicles and they are town vehicles, and I think we have to fly our colors on these vehicles. I was in Webster and I even saw the inspection vehicle was identified in a big way on their community cars. So I think maybe we should look at that, general government at some point. I'll do a little research on it and see if we even have a policy now. If not, maybe we can get a policy, because in my world, the tail doesn't wag the dog. One other comment, I happened to tour the project on Main Street on the corner, I was very curious about what was going on, what's going in there. So what I did was I walked up and talked to the developer while he was out there. I got a tour of the whole inside of the building. They are doing a pretty thorough job on the structural, they're doing elevators, they're, I mean, they're putting some serious money into this building, I'm impressed. So I just want to comment that, you know, if the town works together with some of these developers, I think some of these buildings can come a long way and work better for the town instead of clashing with developers in some ways, whether they be bylaws or various things that, things that prevent progress. be bylaws or various things that are, things that prevent progress. And I think the intent was genuine when it happened. And maybe we need some changes to be a little more pro-business on the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Councilor Daniel starts, I did get a message through Messenger from former Councilor Denise Clements. She wanted me to announce that so people are aware and be prepared because our next meeting won't be till the eighteenth. Southbridge Holiday Parade and tree lighting will be Saturday, November thirtieth. A parade will start from Elm and Main Street at four PM. Five PM will be a tree lighting and activities at the Southbridge Town Common. From five thirty to seven thirty, Santa Photos by Village Photo. Activities will include kids crafts and games, hot cocoa and cookies donated by the Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center, hot coffee donated by a Cerviage Coffee Roasters, hot dogs, kettle corn, fried dough available for purchase. Entertainment will be Ace of Clubs DJ, the Southbridge High School Chorus, the Southbridge High School Jazz Band. The Zeppalamas will be there sponsored by the Southbridge Cultural Council, a local agency which is supported by the Massachusetts Cultural Council of State Agencies. This is all, they have a Facebook page for Southbridge Holiday Visions. Email if you have any questions or you want to give any information, southbridgeholidayvisions@yahoo.com. She also wanted me to relay that, she wanted to encourage people to participate, businesses, and also floats for the parade. So she asked that you visit Facebook or contact Denise Clements. I know last year it was a great evening out and it seems to get bigger and bigger. And great kudos to all that participated in that. It's a great community event. A lot of pride. I know last year when I went, I've been there in the past. It's grown. So kudos to them. So again, Saturday, November thirtieth. So be prepared and we'll push that information out as well. So thank you for indulging me, Council Daniel. I took your time. So thanks for granting me a few minutes. Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I'd like to say that I, I agree with the sentiments of my fellow town councilors when it comes to the, the problem with the buildings being blighted and whether or not they're going to be torn down. I will say for the benefit of the public that I previously met with Mr. Pelletier and we talked about the process involved with a building that's becoming dilapidated and moving on. And just so the public gets a sense, first off, the buildings aren't just left there to rot. When buildings are noted to be having a problem, the inspection services goes to the owner of record and immediately starts the process of notifying them that the building needs to be repaired, that there's various deficiencies that have been noted and that work needs to be done on them. If that doesn't prove satisfactory, then you get involved with liens, tax liens. If it goes on further, if the owner of the building is not cooperative, you end up with court orders for compliance, which involves having to have a town lawyer go. The town can't represent itself. It has to have a lawyer per court order. So you start getting involved in expenses, becoming involved. There can be court ordered receivership, which means that you get a developer to come in and take the building and renovate the building and then make a demand on the owner. And if the owner backs out, then the receiver gets the building. So when you, when you get to a point that the building has gotten to the point that it has to be raised, it's actually been going on for a while. It's a process that takes time. I'm encouraged by Councilor Lazo saying that there must be some way that if you do due diligence, there will be a developer. I'm encouraged by that because the scuttle is that basically it's really hard to get people. When the Attorney General's Office has been involved in terms of looking for receivers to take over buildings, to develop them, people have come in, looked at the buildings and have backed out anyway. So it's not an easy task. The inspection services department has got their work cut out for them. So it's, it's my sense that, that we need to be diligent about it. We need to continue to dot our i's, cross our t's. We need to follow what the bylaws are in town in terms of buildings in this condition. There is no easy fix, but it's good that it's probably coming to light now so that maybe we can put some, some light on the subject and get some improvement in the process and maybe see some change in style, things are done in town. That's all I have. The next meeting of the council is scheduled for Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen at seven PM in council chambers.
Thank you. I'm saying a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor? Well, thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you, Scotty.